All right, ladies and gentlemen, I call this budget work session to order today on June 2nd, 2022. Welcome everybody here today that's here in the courtroom plus in the virtual world. First item today is a budget work session. Anybody here from the Free Health Clinic? Come on up, sir.
Thank you. I have some booklets here if you're.
All right, would you, would you state your name, please, sir?
My name's John Wilson, and I've been working at the clinic for about twenty years. Thank you for your time today, and thank you for your support over the years. It's, it's meant a whole lot. I'm really here just to say that and to underscore that help is still needed. We have been really busy during COVID. We did manage to stay open the whole time, beginning in early last year. We began vaccination clinics, and I think there were about fifteen hundred people who've gone through those, in addition to running the medical and dental and pharmacy. The need is considerable. It still, still exists. Every, I know in the medical clinic, Tamara Hall is our nurse practitioner, and we are seeing two or three patients enrolled every day on the average the last couple of days, the last couple of weeks. Sort of a trend that's been going on all year. And in the dental clinic, it's three or four new patients every, every day, on average being enrolled. I really just wanted to be here to urge you to at least continue level funding if, if nothing else for the clinic. It's really filling a huge gap. And that's, that's about all I had in mind. There's plenty of information in the booklet. If you all have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Wilson? Ron? Jim, you got any questions? No, not at this time. All right. All of you have any questions?
I don't, no, sir.
All right. Mr. Wilson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You got anything else in the budget work session going through that?
I can try to answer any questions. I forwarded the board some information that we've received from the compensation board. We are going through that information now. I'll try to figure out impacts to the locality regarding that. And then receiving some additional budget information. So we'll be combing through that information as well.
All right. Any board members have any budget questions for Mr. Tadlock? All right. All right, next item. Fiscal year 2022 budget amendment discussion. Board have any questions, or what's the decision of the board? All right, any board members have any questions, or any comments, or anything? On the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment. Will I do, we have anything on that budget amendment?
The, the only thing, of course, we had the public hearing last week. The resolution for the budget amendment is in the board packet again this evening. And the appropriations related to that. And as I stated last week, the budget amendment is for $2,632,249.23. And if you look at the appropriation side of it, that's more at $6,90,773.61. The difference there is the board had previously budgeted S R two monies and a portion of the S R three monies back in September, I believe is when it was, but was not appropriated at that time. So that's why, why you see the difference in that resolution. The board has any specific questions related to that resolution.
I'd forward having any questions for Mr. Tadlock?
Well, we have the second page and third page, there are several items that were not budgeted nor appropriate. But that, the budget amendment would include these figures in there.
That, that's correct. There are some items on there from public safety on down via, and some previous school items that the board over the, I think since September, had taken action on, and just the those projects pushed us over the limit of that one percent. So that's why we went on and did the budget amendment. Included those in the budget amendment. Now, those items, the board has already appropriated. So we don't need an appropriation for those particular items.
All right, does board have any questions? Would you like more time to think about it and discuss this later?
Let's come back around to it.
All right. No comment made, we'll move on. The next item is we need to convene and close meeting, and I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the, please. I need the board to motion to, for the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors to convene and close meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Section point, 2.23711A1 for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary are the county administrator and assistant county administrator, because they are deemed necessary, and the presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA section 2.23712.
All right. That's my. All right, do I have second?
Second.
Second, I got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back in a little while. So please keep seated. Motion for us?
I need the board to motion that Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meetings certified by roll call that only public business matters lawfully, presented from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And as were identified in the motion convening, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
I move them up to Tadlock's end.
All right, do I have second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. All right, we'll start the roll call. Mr. Long?
Aye.
Brand?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Ms. Jett? Ms. Jett? All right, and I vote aye. All right. Did you say?
Yeah.
All right.
I thought you said something.
Okay, I thought you said something. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't have anything else on our agenda right at the time till seven P M. Mr. Tadlock, you have anything else?
Uh, no, sir, other than public hearings at seven.
All right. So we will we'll just be here till seven, we'll wait till seven.
Go on recess, I guess, to where it is.
We can go in recess, yep. It's all right with the board members. All right, we will recess till seven P M. Come, come into recess now. We will start our seven o'clock public hearings. And before we start the public hearing, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Louis Walker Tolson. All right, well, thank y'all. All right, our first item on the agenda tonight is a consideration of the Northumberland County Capital Improvement Plan. And I will turn that over to Stuart McKenzie.
Yes, sir. The Capital Improvement Committee of the Subcommittee of the Planning Commission. And this year was comprised of Alfred Fisher, who was the chairman of the planning commission, Mr. Garfield Parker, who was a planning commission member, Mr. Patrick O'Brien, who is also a planning commission member. They were supported by Drew Bassey, the Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Tadlock, the county administrator, and myself. The committee met three times on March 9th, April 4th, and April 11th. And the April 4th meeting, we had interviews with county departments to get more information for each of the projects, to get up to speed with, with what they were requesting. The, the public hearing on the completed plan was held in a special planning commission meeting on May 5th, 2022, and we unanimously recommended for approval. The projects that are in the, this year's capital improvement plan are five vehicles for the sheriff's office at $250,000. For the school board, 110,000 set aside for the Northumberland Elementary School well replacement. The committee wanted to set aside 110,000 this year and anticipate and set aside 110 next year. The total cost is 440,000, and the hope is that a D Q grant would pay for half, half of the well. And if we had 220,000, that would be our match have. The school board also wanted two school buses. The, the committee decided to fund one school bus, I'm sorry, they wanted three school buses. And the committee decided to fund two school buses at $100,000 each, that's 200,000. The bus garage roof for the school has, it's desperately need a replacement. And they requested eight hundred, eight thousand, sorry, eighty-eight thousand, $550. And the committee went ahead and granted $100,000, anticipating cost increases because everything is, is going up these days. The county administration required, requested building maintenance funding of $150,000. And that was approved, and the sanitation district wanted replace a generator, generator at the Redville Pump Station and do an upgrade for post office pump at 96,500. The sheriff's office vehicles were paid for through a general fund pass-through. So the actual total of, of the approved, recommended approval is 656,500. And that's at the top of the, the chart that you all have in your board docs.
All right, Mr. McKenzie, you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Any board members have any questions or comments for Mr. McKenzie? If not, I will open the public hearing on the capital improvement plan. I have no one here that's signed up tonight, but is there anybody out here tonight that would like to comment? If you do, please come forward and state your name and address. And this is on the capital improvement plan. Anybody like comment? All right, we have, anybody in the virtual world like to comment on the capital improvement plan? Anybody in the virtual world would like to comment on the capital improvement plan? Still nobody? All right, since nobody wants to comment, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll put the matter before the board. I move that we approve this capital improvement plan. Second. All right, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. All those against, all right, motion passes. All right, our next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing is being held pursuant to the section 15.22506 Code of Virginia, 1950s amendment, allowing the public to question and comment on the proposed budget. And Mr. Tadlock, that is your item?
Yes, sir. The fiscal year '23 proposed budget, total estimated budget is 45,850,798. Excuse me. The proposed budget does not increase the current real estate tax rate, which is currently 61 cents for $100 of assessed value. There will be no action by the board tonight, as the board has to wait the seven days by Code of Virginia. And this does include both the county and the school board budgets.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tadlock. Any board members have any comments or questions?
With this proposed budget, what, if anything's coming into the general fund this year to help support the budget?
I didn't quite hear you, gentlemen.
With the budget being presented as is tonight, what's coming into the general fund to to make up for any difference that we fall short on, or anything that's coming in here?
Tadlock, you want to comment?
It, it's approximately $2 million out of the general fund.
Okay, so we're taking $2 million into the general fund to balance this budget this year?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other comments from any board members before I open the public hearing? All right, if we don't have any other comments, I'll open the public hearing on the, on the budget here. I have two people signed up, Maurice Johnson.
Maurice Johnson, live in Redville on Timberline Drive. Um, there was so much that I was going to say, but actually what this has been is an experience in great frustration, dysfunction I've seen between the two boards. And regrettably, I don't think the school board is here to hear this, is nothing less than dysfunction. And I find that unacceptable. You guys have tried to invite them to work with you, and it's not been smooth. Basically, what I expect with my tax dollars is that when somebody presents a budget, that a layman could understand it. And the questions that went back and forth with the delays in the responses, again, unacceptable. Now, as taxpayers, we expect the board to fulfill fiduciary responsibilities to the greatest extent possible. Perform all due diligence until all due diligence is exhausted. What I don't want to see is someone present a bill and say, here, pay for this. No explanation, just do it. Out here in the public, what was that? I don't know. And that's a problem. That's a big problem. This process, if there is one, has been weak. I spent thirty years working for the federal government, and this would never fly. Now, nobody has a problem putting money where money needs to exist. But it needs to be documented and explained every time. Otherwise, it's going to be very difficult out in public land to continue to support a non-process that's just here, fund this because we say so. And that's what I'm getting out of it. Yes, there's a lot of paperwork and pictures and images floating around, and this, that, and the other thing. But there's nothing sewing it all together. This cannot stand. And with that, I'll bid you adieu.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. Our next person to sign up is Alexis Wormly.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Once again, I'm Alexis Wormly, 250 Brownstone Road, Heathsville, Virginia. I am, um, I'm coming back speaking with, with a little bit more assertion, but also a little bit of, I want to say sadness, but disappointment. I didn't have all the facts last week, but I have all the facts that I know of. Thing that's disheartening is this program, these funds. You know, first off, like I said, now knowing that it's money not coming out of any of our pockets, it's money that we can grab to use, and it won't cost us anything.
Mr. Wormly? We're talking about the county budget and school budget, not on the amendment.
Oh, I thought this was about the amendment. That's what I signed up for. I thought that's what I signed up for. I didn't want to talk about the amendment. I could sit down there and wait for the amendment. All right.
All right, I don't have anybody else that's signed up. Anybody else would like to speak tonight, please come forward.
Luma Blizzard II, 843 Crabtown Road, here in Heathsville, Virginia. I stand before you speak about the budget. As has echoed earlier, is the concern about the dysfunction of how we are doing this budgeting process. Yesterday, these teachers of Northumberland County Public Schools spent their last day at school and walked out the elementary, middle, and high schools with no contracts going into the upcoming academic year. We're the only district, entire region, that has this challenge. We have a potential attrition problem, which is not going to happen, but it could happen. We have to think about how we are investing in our school systems as cohesive. As echoed earlier, gentlemen, we have to find a way for the two boards to find synergy. I know there was concern, distrust raised in the past budget cycle year on the school board's allocation of funding. We have to find a way in order to get this funding set up better. Budget was submitted back in March, and nothing has come to fruition at this point in time. And my, my colleagues, which I work at the school also, are without contracts. I think we need to find a way to make sure we're able to allocate this money so people can have an assurance that what's happening. It is a question ultimately in this district of job security. Are teachers' jobs secure if the, if the systems that are in place in our government, both at the board of supervisors and the school board, does not allow them to have their contracts in place? I know you're getting ready, this is not a voting night, but I echo the sentiment of those who have spoken before me in the previous weeks to please make efforts to make sure we pass this budget, so that people can have contracts and know their jobs are secure in this county. We need to make sure that we are investing in our educational systems and in our government systems. We recognize we have a concern present about the deficit that is inside of that budget, and that's another conversation. But we must make sure that we are pushing forward to improve the educational systems, to improve the lives of those who live here. We are trying to grow our community, and all we grow in communities are being cohesive at all levels of the government. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else like to speak?
I'm Jason Smart. I'm in Heathsville on Cedar Point Road, and I just wanted to to, speaking strictly to the budget here, the proposed budget. The, I'm all for, you know, education and for the schools. But these, this is a very large line item, and just as a general comment, and I know it usually is a large line item in the budget of most, of most counties. It's usually the largest. It's going up, it looks like about six percent here, which is commiserate with the overall increase in the budget. So that, that much, you know, there's nothing, it doesn't seem like a major red flag there. Because it's not beyond what, what is expected for the, the rest of the proposed budget. But I wanted to point out, though, that generally speaking, the enrollment in Northumberland County Public Schools has been going down steadily, about four percent per year for the past few years. And it looks like that'll probably continue, because if you look at, you know, the number of births relative to number of deaths in our county, you know, there's, there's definitely fewer births than there are deaths. So looking further into the future, it's not likely that it'll increase enrollment. And also because more and more parents are choosing to take alternative schooling, you know, homeschool, private school, others, other resources that are available. So education is important, but I just wanted to say in general, I wanted to express my concern that it continues to rise, spending continues to rise, but enrollment continues to decrease. And also, I didn't mention before, but And also, I didn't mention before, but scores, test scores are continuing to decrease, and that's significant also. So we're getting less and less return on investment for this, for the the school budget, you know, in general, and I'm speaking generally here. But, you know, as far as the budget for this year, you know, I I'm really speaking long term here, you know. I'd I'd like to see it capped at some point, you know, the budget, don't keep raising it when there's fewer and fewer students and the performance is going down and down. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, board members. Again, my name is Dr. Carolyn Crockett, and I say good evening to you again. And I would like to say to you all that the fate of the teachers and the budget and common ground is between you, the board that's here, and the board of supervisors that we have, which are very much here to represent on tonight and to show their faces and supporting us as well. I would like to say to you all that contracts are very important to teachers. And because some of the teachers have not received their contracts, some teachers have already resigned and gone to other places because of this. Our fate is in your hands. We know that you might have some disagreements in the beginning, but I think that the board, Dr. Wargo and those that work with Dr. Dr. Wargo have laid everything out to you all. I don't think there's no fishy stuff that's going on. And we say to you all on tonight, please support, come to a common ground, and support the budget for the teachers and the county. I thank you all.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Alright, anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman. I'm Patrick O'Brien. I'm from Lottsburg. I spent a great deal of time going through the papers with respect to this what was originally a school board building and is now a J R O T C STEM.
Oh, Mr. Brian, we are talking about the county budget
I understand.
and the school budget, not the building or anything.
I understood that the building was part of the county budget.
No.
It is not.
No, that's the amendment.
In that case, I defer.
Okay. Alright, anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? Please come forward if you'd like to speak. Alright, anybody in the virtual world like to speak?
Yes.
Alright, please, I can hear you, but please state your name and address.
Sure. Carl Perez, seven six six Miss Skimmans Road, Heesville, Virginia. And I, calling just in, I've been listening to what is going on and the the process of two things. One, we rely on you to do the work that's cut out for you. We know that it's time consuming. We know that it is hard work. We appreciate that. But we should have a budget passed sooner than later. All the other counties have already passed their budget, and someone said, well, it's because of the General Assembly. Even with the General Assembly doing their thing, counties have been able to move forward. We lack this. This is like the third year we have the exact same problem every year, and it gets old and tiring. And it gets one of those things where it says, will we ever come to a conclusion where we can get this right? Number two is tests do not take, tests do not tell the whole school of a student. Tests are just there. They're engagements, but some of those are not engagements in which they market, those in which tell a true story of a student, just as well as sports, I can tell a student of an athlete. Tests are there to monitor and to maintain, but they're not there to sit there and question what our teachers do day in and day out, and they shouldn't be penalized for those for those things in which we find low test grade scores or enrollment. Because we give tests at the end of the year. We don't gauge kids in the beginning of the year what they know. We gauge them at the end of the year. So the budget shouldn't be based off of what the test scores are. It should be based off of what is needed in the county for it to grow, and as it moves to be better. The whole county went through a pandemic. I wish people would remember that there was a pandemic that we all went through. So there are low test scores everywhere. This is not just Northumberland County. This is all over the state. So I think we need to stop this idea of us being isolated and that only our school is is having low test scores when it's all over the place. Thank you. Have a great night.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anybody else in the virtual world like to speak? Anybody else in the virtual world like to speak? Nobody else. Alright, since we don't have any more comments here tonight, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I'll put the matter before the board. Does the board have any comments they want to make now, at the time?
I want to make a motion.
Alright, Mr. Law?
Okay, I would like to make a motion on the amendment.
Mr. Law, we're on the county budget and the school budget right now. We're, we're not talking about the amendment right now.
Okay, after you close the
We we still have this, we still have the county budget and the school budget on the floor right now.
Okay, but you say you're closing. Once you close it.
I closed the public hearing.
Okay, I'll make my motion on, once you close it.
Alright, if you want to make a motion on the budget, yes.
No, not the budget. You can't make a motion on the budget.
No, we can make a motion to advertise.
All we can do is, we've got to wait minimum of seven days.
Seven days.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna make it seven days, but but that's what all I want to find out from the board. We're not gonna make a motion on on approving the budget.
No, seven days.
Alright. Now, since we got that out of the way, is there any other thing on it that the board wants to talk about now? Now you can do it, Mr. Law.
I'd like to make a motion on the amendment to give the school board permission to secure the grant to build a junior O T C school, a STEM group, and also give some room for some athletic teams in this grant. It's not, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers any money. It's a grant. So I'm making a motion that we move forward, to give them permission.
Alright.
Is your motion to approve the resolution, specifically the J R T C? I want to understand which motion is first.
Okay, the motion is to give them permission to secure the grant to build the school for the junior O T C, for the STEM program.
What what is the motion state, Mr. Tomlin, since you have it?
This does the whole
I mean, not the motion, but the amendment state.
Amendment would include two point six million dollars, which would include S R three funds for school, H VACs for the school, unfinished learning for the school, four and a half school, summer learning school, county, public safety to county, judicial administration county, general administration county, health and welfare county, school will be any free that.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything.
It doesn't break it down.
Doesn't break it down anymore. You, your motion should be for the amendment.
Okay, for the amendment.
For this resolution?
Right.
I just want to make sure what the motion was first.
Right.
Alright, we got a, we got a motion. Do we have a second? Second's not required. Alright, is there any other discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman, just one point of clarification. The S R three money's there, the budget amendment amended nine nine, that should be two thousand twenty-one, not two thousand twenty-two. So what now? On the second page, I just want to point out for the clarification, that it has, under the S R three total, it has budget amended nine nine, two thousand twenty-two. It should be two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that. I think it may be correct on some of them, but some of them.
I don't mind.
Okay.
Alright, we got a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I'm gonna vote for the amendment. I have, as gentlemen, numerous people have mentioned, the process has not been good. We have had to physically either email or request information to one, find out whether it was a contract or not. And we didn't get that until it was done in April of this year. And we finally got information about the size of the building, and it's it's ninety feet long. And you hear about an eighty-foot archery range. You can't, with the layout of that building, you can't do eighty-foot archery range. You do forty feet. We need information to understand what we're going on, and we finally got to it, but it was like pulling hen's teeth. This situation, as other gentlemen have mentioned, was dysfunctional, I think is a good, is a mild word. The situation is, I've heard about the school teachers haven't gotten, hadn't gotten a contract. That's probably right. But I can also tell you what other school systems do. The school board will give contracts subject to appropriation. You read in the paper where some of the Richmond area and our county attorney, Eric Gregory, says that's how they approve the budget, I mean, contracts, subject to appropriation, just like what was done for the contract economy. If you could do it for a million-plus dollars for a building, you could do it for a person's contract. Every position is subject to annual appropriation. If you don't get the budget, you don't have a position, or you can get ripped, reduction in force. And the other thing is, I want to make it very clear, I hear this is not gonna cost the taxpayers anything. That is wrong. This is federal tax dollars, which is coming out of our pockets, our children, our grandchildren, and as far as we need to pay the debt, the debt. So it is tax dollars. It's not coming out of tax dollars in terms of real estate, but it is still coming out your pocket. So I get a little tired of hearing it's not tax dollars. It is tax dollars. It's coming out of each one of your pockets. But we have, in my opinion, I've finally got enough to vote for it. I'm still not happy with it. Because, again, we have had to literally email and had, almost had to have meetings with something as simple as getting dimensions of the building. And the other problem I see is, this is almost like the reverse of Field of Dreams. Build it, and they will come. We get all these programs and then come and ask for the building. We need, we're a small school system, has been mentioned. The enrollment's getting smaller. We can't be everything to everybody. We have to do good things for the students, and that's the question, is if a balance for the school system and the balance for this Board of Supervisors to know how much and should we be doing? So it, I do, I will vote for it, but I'm not happy at the process, because it took us too long to get to this point. If some information had been started to share, certainly after the first year, but when you got closer to the contract signing, it would have been nice to know what it means. That's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlin.
That's enough.
And anybody else like to speak?
Tommy, I I understand what you're saying, but, you know, it's always been an open door. Superintendent's office, Jason's office, they always ask, if you had any questions, feel free to come in and ask.
But we're restricted as to who we can ask, when we can ask, and how we can ask.
Well, according to what he was saying, it would have been legal for you to, you know, to call, ask him questions.
We used to have the superintendent show up here monthly. We don't have that anymore.
Yeah, we need, we need, I I drew it on that, but they are willing to share any information that you have a problem with.
Alright, anybody else like to speak?
I agree with what Tommy said. I definitely don't like the process. I am gonna support this now to move, to move along with it. But I look, if, once they got this building on the mind, of course, it first started at the school board office. I understand it couldn't be done that. Then that's the first thing I heard, but J R O T C, that popped up then, that they couldn't build a school board office. When you look at his capital projects that are just adopted for this year, they got urgent, high, high level of need. A will, I mean, over a million dollars worth of stuff right here that hasn't even been addressed, that taxpayers will locally tax, will have to put the bill for. And that's, that's what's a little discouraging, is getting the priorities straight. I'm not against the building for the children of the region. Some other priorities here, look like maybe they marked themselves as urgent, but they haven't filed it too aggressive with any of these funds.
Oh, sorry.
No, finished.
Finished, alright.
I've, I've had a mixed bag of people that's called me and that I've talked to. I've got people that are for the building. Got people that, per se, not against the building, but they felt that funds ought to have been placed elsewhere to help absorb some of the costs of taxpayers, some of the projects in the school. You know, no such thing as free money. I've made the comments in the board meeting before, that reality's gonna hit here again in another year or so, and this money's gonna be gone. And we're not gonna have funds like this. And, and, they, they took it out, they're gonna have to figure where it's gonna come from, and this, and it's gonna come as a call. Like I said, I I got probably more people that's that's not for this. Business owners, some of the families, I've talked to some of the teachers. Whatever way it goes, it goes.
Alright. Alright, I will agree with Tomlin's, Mr. Brian's, Mr. Jet's comments. The comments are a hundred percent correct. This process has really been a terrible thing to work with. There's been a lack of information on to it. It's difficult to get. But there is no free money. It all comes with a price. So I will support this, not, not the process that it was done. Alright, we have a motion and a second on the floor. There are no other comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Aye. So it's a, it's a four to one vote. Alright, Mr. Tadlock, you have anything else for this meeting?
No, sir, I do not.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to carry over.
So maybe the next Tuesday, the seventh, at five thirty.
Yep, next Tuesday, seventh, five thirty. Alright, all those, you have a second? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen, for coming here, and everybody in the virtual world. Thank you.